Okay. Gonna re-adjourn the meeting?
Reconvene.
Madam Clerk?
Reconvene.
Councilmember Beard?
Reconvene.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Fong?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Here.
Mayor Nguyen?
Present. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Kingsley Okuriki to lead us in the invocation.
Okay, please prepare yourselves according to your faith. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction, help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service, grant us the prudent use of reason and compassion to ensure the success of this great city, and guide our elected and appointed officials to be the leaders the Garden Grove community needs. Amen.
Right now, I'd like to ask everyone to please face the flag, put your right hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Scott Stiles to step forward. We'll have you swear in. So, repeat after me. I, I, Scott Stiles, solemnly swear,
solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties,
upon which I'm about to enter,
upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Well, that doesn't happen every day in Garden Grove. Welcome aboard. He's not only our new city manager, he's also our new neighbor moving to our city as well. So, you'll be seeing him around at your local supermarket, at the parks, with his two daughters. Mr. Stiles, would you like to say anything?
Mr. Mayor and the members of City Council and to the public here today, all the people in the community, I just want to thank the Mayor and Council for appointing me to this position. I'm very honored and humbled to be a servant of the community, to serve the community. I'm very excited to be here and I'm looking forward to being out and about in the community. And I would encourage anyone who would like me to come to speak to your group or to your business or your neighborhood association, you know, that's what we're supposed to be doing in local government is listening to the community, making sure that we understand what their needs are. So, again, please, if you'd like me to come to your community, call my office. I'd love to come and meet with folks and just, you know, hear your thoughts about what are important to you. So, thank you very much. It's been, everyone has been very warm and welcoming to me and I'm very grateful to it, to everyone. Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to convene the successor agency with the City Council and we're going to hear public comments. So, if you'd like to have any public comments, go ahead and fill out the pink card and bring it to our City Clerk, Ms. Baylor. We'll begin with Bill Blackard. Following Bill Blackard would be Charles Mitchell and then Wen Hung. Welcome. Would you please switch the mic over?
Good evening, John. My name is Bill Blackard and I live here in Garden Grove, I have for forty some odd years. And I, really, you guys only give people about five minutes, so I thought I'd write it or I can just read it. I live on Ninth Street in Garden Grove and I want to bring up two important safety issues in our area. And I say this because we live within seeing distance of both areas. Like I said, having lived here for forty years, we've seen many accidents happen at the corner of Ninth Street and Garden Grove Boulevard. A lot of people traveling east on Garden Grove Boulevard turn left into Ninth Street, they try to beat the westbound traffic and they turn in front of them. And I've seen that personally happen. We see pedestrians put at risk because of this too. And we desperately need a left turn signal at the intersection, which we've needed for years. Also, at the corner of Ninth and Stanford, there's a crosswalk that needs serious attention because it's a safety problem too. It's not only striped, it has those yellow placards that you can't see until you get right up on them that no one seems to notice. My wife and I walk to the park six days a week and there've been numerous times we've almost been hit while in a crosswalk. I had a car come up within twelve inches of me in the middle of the crosswalk and then it went around me. Anyway, we're really concerned with students that walk there, two also from Garden Grove High School. A lot of them walk there every morning going to school and coming back at nighttime. And my wife and I pay attention and watch carefully and still have almost been hit several times. And those students come through with earplugs, so they can't really hear what's going on around them. So, sometimes there's a bunch of them come across at one time and they, you know, I've been to school a few times, and a couple of times they've almost gotten hit. There's no lights at that thing like they have in City Hall and also on Garden Grove Boulevard. And if you come that way or this direction, you almost have to be right up on it in order to see those placards. And people are not very nice if you tell them, if you call them to it when you're in the middle of a crosswalk. I've been flipped off, car just driving around and they keep on going. So, I brought, I said I'd like to say this. I don't know what it's going to take to get this put in. I talked to a traffic engineer, like about a year ago. He said we couldn't afford to put that, put a green light down there, a turn signal. And I said, well, you need a camera then. He said, well, we can't afford that either. So, I'm beginning to wonder what can we afford? Now, just recently, or last year, that reimagined Garden Grove, there's a lot of money spent on that thing. And I don't care if the Chamber of Commerce paid for it or not, but who's paying for to get safety products? Though, we really need those lights because somebody's going to get hit and they're going to sue you. And they give thousands of dollars, millions of dollars now so far. And I just, myself, I just like to see it taken care of before somebody does get hurt. And all you need to do is just, like I said, go out and walk and you'll see what I'm talking about. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I know the protocol is for everyone to address their comments to the mayor. But with the mayor's permission, I'd like to address our new city manager. I want to welcome you to Garden Grove. Seems like we're gaining one and losing one with Sue Emery leaving. But I hope that'll be to our advantage. You came all the way from Cincinnati. Thanksgiving is coming up in a few months. I hope you're not planning on having any flying turkey giveaways. Now, it's interesting to look back at the history of some of our city managers. Just a moment. No, they haven't painted a target on your back yet, but wait and see. There was one city manager, George Tindall, and we had one of our residents, Bob Owens, who every council meeting managed to find some way of criticizing our city manager. But sometimes it was just in fun, but sometimes it was serious. We've had situations where there have been serious problems with our city manager, with Matt Fratell, for instance. There were issues that I don't think have been resolved yet. But I'm looking forward to seeing you working with the council and with the city. And I think there's an opportunity for everyone to benefit from this new association. On another note, I had the opportunity this afternoon, as a matter of fact. I was out in front of my house and I noticed a motorcycle officer with his lights on stopping somebody coming down an adjacent street. So, I thought this is a good time. So, I walked from my home. So I walked from my home over to where the officer was, uh, conducting his business with the driver. And I'm sure he thought, uh-oh, this must be some kind of problem. Instead, I walked up to the officer, reached out and shook his hand, and I thanked him for patrolling our streets. It's too often that we take so many things for granted. We have a great police department, fire department, public services that make us proud to be residents of Garden Grove. So I want to say to all of them and all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Nguyen Hung? Following Nguyen Hung would be...
Genovia. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and, um, council member. Well, I come back a second time, I made a complaint about caution Fat Buoi activity. Ladies and gentlemen, I am writing this letter to request the caution member of, of Garden Grove. Please take a serious consideration about caution Fat Buoi. Question number one. Last time on June 9th, 2015, I'm here to question about conflict between heat position Garden Grove caution, caution man and Vietnamese community leader. I repeat again, I never say is illegal. I just asking him reconsider is a conflict of interest. I give you a, an example. My question is what the hat you will, you will wear when that situation? Today I made a point. Mr. Fat Buoi sent a public announcement to call a protest to the Sacramento City about the relationship between Sacramento City and Ho Chi Minh City. And the protest is scheduled on a Tuesday, July 14th, 2015. It, which is the same day as caution member regular meeting here in Garden Grove. And you decide to stay here. That's good, good point, because you supported to Garden Grove. But when you send a letter to request the people to go to protest and you organize the protest, you pay for the bus to, to go to the Sacramento. And I don't question about the reason to protest. I just wonder why did you put your long arm to the North California? We need you here in Garden Grove, not Sacramento. Let work the perfect job to finish your term. I believe you will be out of next lesson, remember. Question number two. Mr. Fat Buoi was select to be next president of the Vietnamese community, replacing Mr. Neil Nguyen. As soon as you accept the position, you filed a license C-3316208 from the Vietnamese Federation of the South California. New Viet Quoc Da California was suspended since 2013. And the debt about eighteen thousand dollars. And you cheat IRS and California security state by filing a new license C-3793974. And the new name is Vietnamese and you put in the new letter. Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California. You left out the other part. If any, anyone want to copy, you can go to look at the bus, the number I just, uh, reading now. My question, you remember, even you change the name, you change the new license to void a two-year tax suspended by, you know, State of California. You still own the people because you still run same board of directors. You same member, only thing you change a new closure. Thank you very much. And before I finish, I asking all of you, please support resolution number 9315-15. I am immigrant forty years ago from Vietnam. Thank you very much.
Genocia Garcia? Or Geno... Genovea. Genovea. Hi.
Hello, everybody. How are you today? Okay. Today I speak about my life. My name is Genovea Garcia. I am from Ecuador. I lived a few years in this amazing city, Garden Grove. In this time, I was living in this beautiful city where I find peace, love, liberty, and divine happiness. Because it's a great place where many people is immigrant. Now, we need to work together for a better life in this precious city. Here, I will support a city council of Garden Grove in resolution immigration reform, DAPA and DACA. I ask the city council members to truly support immigrants by passing a resolution for DAPA and DACA. And also as Congress to pass immigration reform. Thank you for your time and I hope we can work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Katie Blazer? And then Jaclyn Dan? And then Long Chung?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Um, my name is Katie Blazer and I'm a representative with CHIRLA. Um, I'm the Orange County Community Education Representative. Um, CHIRLA is a nonprofit organization, Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles. Um, although we are now, uh, working in six counties throughout the state, I'm here in Orange County. Uh, we have, um, we proudly have over eight thousand members, um, who actively support the work that we're doing. So, um, our, our goal at CHIRLA is to organize, educate, and advocate with the immigrant community, for society fully inclusive of all immigrants. And so, um, we, um, sorry, uh, I forgot part of my message in my seat. But, um, so we have over eight thousand members statewide. But here in Orange County, um, we are expanding. We have hundreds of community members, some from Garden Grove and other cities. Um, so we were really excited to see the work that you all did at your last council meeting, um, to really, to really support the immigrants. We know that Garden Grove is primarily an immigrant city. Um, so that was a really big success and we're very proud of that work being done here and we're really happy to be part of that. Um, and we just really wanted to encourage that momentum and really support all the, the immigrants, specifically undocumented immigrants who, who are here in this room and who live in, uh, your community that you're representing. Um, and, um, you know, at CHIRLA, we've helped, um, roughly, we've submitted around eight thousand DACA applicants. Um, and so, uh, as many people in this room can attest, I'm sure DACA is a life-changing, um, opportunity. And so we would like to see that, uh, uh, support continue with us, but, uh, we'll need your help for that. So thank you so much.
Jaclyn Dan? Then Long Chung? And then Heather Kwak?
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Jaclyn Dan and I am here today to voice my support for Resolution 18A, which urges Congress to pass comprehensive immigration reform. I am a resident of Garden Grove and have been working in the city as an immigration attorney for the past five years with Asian Americans Advancing Justice, the nation's largest legal and civil rights organization for Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. Advancing Justice serves more than fifteen thousand individuals and organizations every year and I personally have helped nearly three hundred immigrant clients in the time that I have been working in Garden Grove. And currently represent many long-term lawful permanent residents who are fighting deportation and unlawful prolonged immigration detention. Forty years ago, my parents came here from Vietnam as political refugees fleeing the war at a time when similar refugees were fleeing Guatemala and El Salvador where there was persecution, torture, and mass murder. But they were denied that same status because the US government supported the regimes that were, um, committing these human rights abuses. Our immigration laws have for a long time been discriminatory and unfair and have failed to reflect reality. Um, we definitely need to do a lot to reform immigration. The 2013 Senate bipartisan comprehensive immigration bill that failed to become law in many ways comes closest to addressing that. Um, it planned to fix our system in four ways. First, immigration reform would streamline current legal pathways of immigration by cutting down backlogs to reuniting US citizens with family members, allowing businesses to more easily bring over the most skilled and talented workers, providing visas to foreign entrepreneurs, and helping the most promising foreign graduate students stay in this country. As it stands, it can take up to twenty-four years for a US citizen to immigrate a family member to the United States legally. With such a devastating weight, many of our residents who have not seen their loved ones for years may never be reunited with them. For example, I met an elderly Vietnamese woman in Garden Grove, a naturalized US citizen, who was forced to flee Vietnam by boat, leaving her son behind. When he fell ill in Vietnam and missed his interview for Fast Track Immigration as a survivor of torture in the reeducation camps there, a form of relief that is no longer available, his mother was forced to proceed with a standard immigrant relative petition. With an eleven-year wait due to the backlog, it is likely that she will die before this visa is approved and that she will never see him again. As a city council that has shown so much care for human rights in Vietnam, one of the best ways to fight for survivors of human rights abuses is supporting federal legislation that allows them to be reunited with loved ones that they left behind when forced to flee their homeland. Second, comprehensive immigration reform, as it stands, proposed, would actually strengthen, not weaken enforcement at our borders. It would also go after businesses who knowingly hire undocumented workers. Fourth and lastly, comprehensive immigration reform would provide a pathway to earn citizenship in which undocumented immigrants already contributing to our economy must pass a criminal background check and pay a penalty in order to get a path towards legalization. Immigrants, both documented and undocumented, are an integral part of the Garden Grove community. Pro-immigrant policies will help our community and city thrive by giving their lives stability and allowing them to contribute legally to the growth of our economy. There are about two hundred seventy-four thousand undocumented Orange County residents, fourteen percent of whom are of Asian descent. One in six children in Orange County have at least one undocumented parent. Undocumented immigrants make up nine percent of our county's workforce. And not all are Latino. Two hundred thousand undocumented people in the US are Vietnamese. Without these immigrants, our economy and our community would collapse. Realistically, they are here to stay and we need common sense policies that address our broken immigration system. Many localities have passed resolutions that have supported programs such as the President's executive actions because they know that these programs make sense and have a positive impact on their constituents and community. Resolution 18A's language is also grounded in economic facts. If all one point five million immigrants in California who are eligible for executive action um, actually apply and receive authorization to work legally in the state, it would increase the nation's GDP by seventy-five point eight billion. Moreover, we should be afraid of how communities deteriorate when undocumented immigrants are forced to live in the shadows. I once helped a woman from Garden Grove who immigrated legally with her husband and their two children. But when he divorced her, she lost the immigration status that she had obtained as a derivative beneficiary of his visa. When he obtained custody of their children and decided that they would live in the US permanently, she was forced to make an impossible choice. Leave her children behind in the US or stay with them here but lose her legal status. This is how she became undocumented. When she remarried, her new husband brutally and publicly beat her, even throwing her down the stairs in front of a group of children at their apartment complex.
Please wrap up.
She was too afraid to speak to the police believing that law enforcement would not protect an undocumented immigrant against a citizen's spouse. He was later arrested for seriously injuring another person. But that would not have happened if she felt that she would be able to trust the city and the police to protect her. Resolutions like 18A go a long way towards making that change and making our community safer, not just for immigrants, but for all of us. Um, for all these reasons, I urge the council members to stand by their vote in favor of Resolution 18A. Do not back down from doing the right thing.
Long Chung? And then Heather Kwak? And then Luis Vega?
My name is Long Chung. Thank you for your leadership serving Garden Grove community. I have worked for World Relief Garden Grove as, um, refugee director of resettlement and immigration representative. I came to the United States as a refugee from Vietnam in nineteen eighty-nine. Before I was receiving to the United States, I fled the communist government of Vietnam and ended up in, as an undocumented immigrant in Cambodia and then Malaysia. Today, new immigrants are coming from other countries. We should welcome them. I support the resolution in support of DACA, DAPA, and administrative relief. Thank you, Ba Nguyen, Fat Buoi, and Steve Jones for voting to this resolution two weeks ago. I show leadership. It shows leadership and makes Garden Grove more welcome city. I want to fight for good people. Give them a chance to use their skills and talents. Garden Grove is a place that we can all do this. I pray that the United States Congress will follow your leadership to pass comprehensive immigration reform in this Congress. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Kwak?
Hello. Hi, my name is Heather Kwak and I'm here both as a Garden Grove resident for nearly thirty years now and as an employee of World Relief Garden Grove. Um, I am an accredited representative recognized by the Board of Immigration Appeals. I provide immigration legal services to a variety of ethnic groups, um, here in Garden Grove. Um, thank you to the Garden Grove, uh, City Council for passing the resolution on expanding DACA and granting deferred action for parental accountability. We need your support in a resolution like this because our president and Congress has failed to pass comprehensive immigration reform. Um, my note is sweet, in short, that's about it. But I have an additional thing because I am a resident of Garden Grove. Um, I ask kindly that the city of Garden Grove make a decision on the abandoned development on Garden Grove in Burkehurst behind where I work, um, at World Relief. It is an eyesore that negatively represents my city. And, uh, before I came here, my mother literally said, um, it is killing Garden Grove that eyesore. So please, um, make a decision. I either bring it down or make a development there because, um, it is, is not representing Garden Grove very well. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Vega? And then following Luis Vega is Jose Hernandez and then Mariana Rivera.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, um, to share what I believe and what I, what I think. Um, first of all, um, I'm in full, full support for DACA and RAPA as well for, uh, immigration reform. Uh, two weeks ago, you passed a resolution and I hope that you continue working together, uh, to support immigrants. This is not about Latinos, not just about Latinos, it's about Asians, Pacific Islanders, Middle Eastern. Um, in Garden Grove, there is a big population of immigrants and I, and I hope that you support all of them, not just a few. Uh, back in history, uh, we treated differently our Japanese brothers and sisters. And we treated well our German brothers and sisters. I hope that this, um, doesn't happen again. Uh, it's just how history repeats itself in different ways, but similar. Uh, today, we, we, we talk about immigrants, um, in a negative connotation. Just because we live a lie is, is good, but it's not morally good. So if you have moral values... So if you have moral values, then support immigrants because that's a human, that's a human right. I have a human right to live here. I came undocumented, along with my family. I didn't have a decision whether I came documented or undocumented. Unfortunately, that was my pathway to come to the United States. And I don't believe I'm a criminal. I don't have a criminal record behind me. So I'm a work immigrant. I work hard, like many others, in the fields. They pick the fruits, the vegetables, the fruits that you eat every day, but you still treat them differently. So all I'm asking is to work together, to pass a resolution, to continue having the sentiment towards immigrant rights. Mr. Chris Van, you in a sense, you wanted to support the resolution, but at the same time, no. I don't understand what's the reasoning behind, but I hope that if you really support immigrants, you do it. And work together with Mayor Baugh, Mr. Buoi, to support this resolution. Mr. Buoi, you came as an immigrant, you also have an accent like me. I hope, I hope that you're with us, that you're with me. Okay? I work with many immigrants. I help them with their naturalization process at Ocor. My office is at Ocor. I bring business to Garden Grove. I eat in Garden Grove. I pay taxes. So come on, let's just work together in passing a resolution and keeping this resolution. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Hernandez.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Jose Hernandez, and, you know, I'm going to echo a lot of the different thoughts and feelings that folks had, but, you know, just briefly, you know, just talk about my story. You know, I'm an immigrant. My parents came as immigrants, most of my family are immigrants. Luckily, I'm blessed now, I'm a resident, but for a long time, I knew what it felt like to be discriminated against. I knew what it felt like to go into a place and say, "You don't have the proper documentation to be here." I know what it felt like to get my car taken away and to have it impounded and to lose it and have my whole world just come crashing down. I was a youth, I was a young man, and I was trying to find my way in the world. And it was until, like, I was able to have the Dream Act and AB 540 and all these different things that was able to help people like myself, you know, simply folks that wanted to come here for a better life. And it's the, it's the American dream, it's the immigrant dream, right, for all of us to be here. And I remember how lowly I felt. I felt less than human. I felt like, like a third, like a second-class citizen, you know? And it was really psychologically impactful on me, like, and I knew that it was like that for a lot of my family members and friends. My mother, I remember her being scared every time we'd go on the road because she was afraid that somebody would pull over. She didn't, couldn't get documentation, get her car taken away, and I seen it happen, where families were just taken out of their cars and left to go walking back home because they didn't have the proper documentation. We've come a long way in California in passing driver licenses for undocumented folks, to being able to push for DACA and DAPA, and I hope that Garden Grove can be on the right side of history in this moment, to be able to support this legis, this resolution, to be able to support this. In a moment where so much of the world and so much of the United States is fueling this hate, this fear-mongering, it's so much easier to look at immigrants, to look at Muslim folks, to look at African Americans, be like, "No, you are the problem. You are the reason why things are the way that it is," rather than being like, "What have I done? What has the United States done to impact the lives of those immigrants all over?" There are always folks that are anti-immigrant and are quick to say, "We're a nation of laws. We're a nation of laws." Well, what about the nations that had democratically elected leaders that were then toppled by regimes, toppled by this government? What about all these different situations where Trans-Pacific Partnerships and NAFTA and all these things where they pretty much destroyed and decimated unions and workers and livelihoods? I was part of that wave. My family was part of that wave. When NAFTA passed, it destroyed agricultural jobs. Why? Because all of the grain that was GMO produced was getting flooded into Mexico. Mexico workers could not compete with the subsidized agriculture, you know, the grain that's coming from here. So guess what? For the first time in the history of Mexico, it cannot feed itself. It was depending on the United States. Things like that that are not talked about and that we must remember. So in a moment where Donald Trump is surging in the polls and all these things are happening, we must remember, and I hope that all of you will look into your hearts, find that compassion. And I love what the convocation that the gentleman here said, "Because we must come with compassion." And I always ask, "What would Jesus do? Who would Jesus deport? Would Jesus ask, 'Do you have proper documentation? Okay, then I can heal you. Okay, then I can give you food. Okay, then I can give you housing.'" No, he didn't say that, and that was not what he came to do. And if all you folks that are here in this room and claim to be people of faith aren't really understanding the true message of Christ, then you're not really understanding what it is to be a follower of Him. And I urge, and really just, you know, personally from a place where I care about my community, I care about my family members, and I care about doing the right thing, I hope that this, which is just a symbolic resolution, can be supported and that it goes through and that, you know, we stand behind this community that's right here and all the folks that are here to speak. Thank you.
Mariana Rivera, and then April Lars.
Usted necesita un intérprete?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to interpret for her? Okay.
Hola, buenas tardes, miembros del consejo.
Good evening, council members.
Dios me los bendiga a todos.
God bless all of you.
Mi nombre es Mariana Rivera.
My name is Mariana Rivera.
Tengo 12 años viviendo en Anaheim.
12 years living in Anaheim.
Soy voluntaria en la organización Ocor, que ayuda a hacerse personas ciudadanas.
Volunteer Organization Ocor that helps folks become citizens.
Soy inmigrante hace 12 años aquí en Estados Unidos.
I've been an immigrant here in the United States for 12 years.
Vine aquí porque mi familia está aquí por necesidades especiales.
I'm here because my family is here because of special needs.
Ya sufrió en mi familia la deportación.
I have suffered in my family what it feels like to be deported.
Y se siente horrible ver cómo las familias son separadas.
And it feels horrible to see how families are separated.
Les pido que pongan su mano en su corazón.
I ask that you put your hand on your heart.
Y que tomen conciencia que necesitamos la reforma migratoria, DAPA y DACA.
And put in your consciousness that we need DACA and DAPA and immigration reform.
La mayoría de las personas.
The majority of the people.
Las que levantan las cosechas.
The ones that pick our food.
Y son la mayoría los que levantan esta economía de Estados Unidos son indocumentados.
And many of the folks that lift up our economy here are undocumented.
Les pido que trabajemos juntos y apoyemos esta reforma migratoria, DACA y DACA.
I ask that we work together and we pass the resolution, DACA, DAPA, immigration reform.
Tomen conciencia de las familias que están separadas.
Take consideration of the families that have been separated.
Espero que tomen la mejor decisión de apoyar estas resoluciones.
I hope that you make the decision to support this resolution.
Es todo y Dios los bendiga.
That is all. Thank you. God bless you.
Gracias. April Lars, and then following April Lars, Daniela Tena Perez, and then Michael Dishler.
Good evening, Mayor Nguyen and the city council members. Sorry. My name is April Lars, and I'm a Sana and a resident. I'm here to support DACA and DAPA resolution. My sister was able to benefit from this resolution by getting her work permit. She no longer had to live in fear of getting deported and be taken away from her disabled son. We are not criminals. I don't want my future to be stereotyped by that we're drug dealers and stuff like that. We just want a new change. So I ask you, members of the city council, Mayor Nguyen, to forward this resolution, not only did it benefit my family, but will benefit other families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Daniela Tena Perez, Michael Dishler, and then Jenny Sun.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Daniela Tena Perez, and I am representing Ultimate Health Services. We are federally qualified health centers serving the Orange County and Los Angeles areas. Our Garden Grove clinic alone serves 14,000 of your constituents, including many of our API and Latino community members. Ultimate Health Services is a strong supporter of the president's executive action on immigration because we know it will benefit our community members in so many ways, including increasing access to healthcare. So I'm here today on behalf of Ultimate to ask you to support the DACA, DAPA resolution in order to better the lives of so many of our community members and many of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dishler.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to support rescinding 9315-15. I don't, I don't think that we should be involved in federal immigration policy at all. And to listen to all these stories about how we abandon our children and come to America, and then you try to lay the guilt on the American people that we should feel sorry for you? You abandoned your children and your families, and then you come into this country illegally. We have immigration laws that are not being enforced, and this country is being hijacked by all kinds of illegal immigrants, not just from Mexico, all over the world, and we just can't have that. We can't survive as a country with a bunch of people coming in and supporting illegal immigration. I support legal immigration. I think the country is built on legal immigration, and what's happening here is wrong. I don't think that we should be involved in federal immigration policies at all because you can't have a city favoring illegal immigration and then expect the people that have been here. I've lived here for 41 years, and I'm tired of seeing illegal people, all right? They are illegal. That is the word, illegal immigrants, not immigrants. They are illegal. When you're a citizen and you are made a citizen, then you become a legal immigrant. So this wording of American people are separating our families, you're separating yourself. That is not us. You knew it when you came here, and I'm not going to accept responsibility for it. The second thing I want to talk about is coyotes. I just want to let people know, if you live at Magnolia and Lampson, or if you live at Lampson and Dale, this area is where I live, and we have coyotes, and people don't know it. And I tell them, and they think it's a joke. They killed my cat. They killed neighbors' animals. I want people to be aware that if you live behind Stater Brothers, you're living with coyotes. And then I see that we have a lake here, and it used to be a few ducks, and now it's got this huge overpopulation of ducks and chickens. This is food for the coyote. I don't see anybody going out there and taking these chickens and the ducks and putting them in a cage at night to protect them from the coyotes, but yet these people want us to bring our dogs and cats in and not let them out. So I don't, you know, I'm not going to speculate why there's this population of ducks out there, but there's too many. There's too many. Thank you.
Following Jenny Sun will be Arturo Perilla, and then Karina Paredes.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, staff, and Mayor Nguyen for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jenny Sun from the Korean Resource Center. During the last council meeting, this council voted and passed the resolution in support of expanded DACA and DAPA. We heard Mayor Nguyen's personal story and also heard from Councilmember Fat Buoi and also Chris Van. In response to the resolution, there were voices of opposition, but by and large, the community members in Garden Grove applauded and approved of Garden Grove's support for immigrant youth and families. As you can see, we have so many community members supporting this resolution. Of course, there are voices of opposition, but look at this room. We filled it. We filled it with supporters. And so I'm here today with a room full of brothers and sisters, a room and with 12 Korean-American senior leaders who've been organizing in the community, calling voters, and speaking to people one-on-one. Poll after poll, voters support DACA and DAPA and immigration reform. Now, the reason for the support is because there's nothing more American than keeping families together and the opportunity to dream for a better future. Again, Garden Grove is a city where 39% is Latino and 38% is Asian Pacific Islanders. In such a diverse city, DACA and DAPA is a relevant issue, and it is the task of the city to support measures that benefits its residents. DACA changes lives, and it gives undocumented youth a chance to pursue their goals and to give back to their communities. DACA will protect families from being torn apart. On behalf of thousands of undocumented youth and families, please take this opportunity to make a mark on history. Take this chance to stand on the right side of history. Thank you for your time.
Arturo Perilla.
Mi nombre es Arturo Perilla. Soy también un inmigrante latino.
Good evening. My name is Arturo, and I also am an immigrant.
Como miembro de la Unión SUW, venimos a participar y a pedirles que ustedes apoyen el DACA y DAPA.
On behalf of SCIU Workers Union, we come here in support of the resolution DACA and DAPA.
Porque como latinos siempre hemos sido, hemos sufrido de discriminación y no es justo. Nosotros venimos a este país a trabajar.
As Latinos, we have suffered much discrimination, and it's not fair because we come to this country to work.
Y sé que con el apoyo de ustedes lo vamos a lograr si se puede.
And with your support, we can reach it. Yes, we can.
Karina Paredes, and then Andres Rivera.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, city council, city staff, Mr. Mayor, general public. My name is Karina Paredes, and I am with CLU, Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, whose office is in Garden Grove. As a faith-based nonprofit, economic justice organization, we believe that everybody is made in God's image, and that's why everybody should be treated with respect and dignity. And guess what? That also means undocumented immigrants, not illegal, but undocumented immigrants. We were so thrilled that the city of Garden Grove approved the resolution in favor of DACA and DAPA just two weeks ago. We were so excited to see the hope in our communities be lifted and have Garden Grove be the pioneering city, to stand with the huge immigrant population, not only here in Garden Grove, but also throughout Orange County. So I urge you, not only as an organizer for the faith community, who often serves as a sanctuary and support for those who are undocumented, but also as a daughter of undocumented immigrants. And just referring to what was said before, this is a non-binding resolution, and I know many think that local government should not meddle in federal business, but let me tell you that it's a lot easier for our communities to come here and voice it to city council than going to DC or anything like that. So who better than local government that's seeing people right here in the communities to kind of send a statement of support for these issues? So again, I urge you to not rescind your vote on this resolution, and let's keep Garden Grove as the pioneering city and for it to let, let it set the landscape for all of Orange County. Thank you.
Andres Rivera, and then Maricela Perez.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor Nguyen. As an immigrant and longtime resident of Garden Grove, I am very disappointed to hear that council member Buoi and Beard are reciting their vote in urging Congress to do something on an immigration bill that would definitely benefit a lot of our immigrants in Garden Grove. I ask myself, are these two council members, are these two-- I ask myself, are these two councilmembers, are these two councilmembers turning their backs on thousands of hard-working Americans who work in the tourism industry? A tourism industry that you so, you know, you like to flaunt about in Garden Grove? These are immigrants who work in these places, in these hotels. Are they turning a blind eye to the needs of immigrants, of the 45% of foreign-born folks in Garden Grove? What about the families? Are they for the separation of families? Where is your integrity and commitment to this diverse community? I read something on your, on the City Council webpage, City Councilmember Fan, and it said that you are all about, one of your goals is to bring community and diversity together. That was on the website. So where is that at, when you voted against it last week? Where is your leadership to Chris Beard and Fat Buie? Right? So I urge you to take leadership in drafting Mr. Jones, Mr. Fan, Chris Beard, Mr. Buie. Take leadership in working together with Mayor Nguyen in drafting something. This is something symbolic. Yes, it's not, you can't make federal laws on immigration, that's not your, you know, that's not your job. But this is symbolic, and it's important to have this be something that is said of the city of Garden Grove, that it's safe to be here, to live here. I know what it's like to live in fear. So this is important, and it's going to be important for thousands of families and youth. The youth, they are the future, right? So do not buy into this Donald Trump rhetoric and xenophobia, and leave all politics aside. Thank you.
Maricela Perez, and then Ada Briseño, and then Walter Muniton.
Good evening. My name is Maricela Perez. I work at Hyatt Garden Grove. I've been there for 10 years. Right now, we are fighting to have a better workplace with more benefits and dignity. I have helped make this hotel and this city be great, and today I demand that the city I work for and the place I work for give me dignity to make me better too. I'm in front today to demand that you do the right thing for thousands of people in the city. Do not take your support away from this resolution. Continue to support DACA and DAPA. The immigrants are the backbone of the tourism industry.
My name is Ada Briseño, and I am Secretary Treasurer of Unite Here Local 11, and we represent over 20,000 professionals in the tourism industry and the service industry in Los Angeles and Orange County, and I'm infuriated today. This is the second meeting I come to, and I came here and I left almost at 10 o'clock two weeks ago to see through that you are going to be supportive of DACA and DAPA. Just the resolution does not have any significance except for backing up the backbone of the immigrant community. And what I'm hearing from you today with the fact that this is back on the agenda to be pulled is that Garden Grove is an anti-immigrant city. That's what it means to me if you pull this resolution off, if you vote this resolution out. Please don't do that. We will not take that. We're not, we're going to be back over and over again. You have the power to continue this resolution, and you already have done it, and we expect you to keep it. You know, I think it's very unfortunate, and I really do believe that, you know, we're going to figure out, are you Donald Trump Jr.? Are you Donald Trump Jr. by making sure that this comes out of here? Which side would you be on if this were the 60s and it was a civil rights movement? Would you be on the side, the right side, or would you be on the wrong side of history? There's no place for hatred in this country, none. We're here with our Korean friends, and we're going to continue to stand together to demand dignity in this city. We do live here, we work here, we play here. I don't know if I'm going to be playing here any longer if you vote this resolution out.
Walter Muniton, and then Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, staff, and members of our audience. My name is Walter Muniton. I'm a Neighborhood Improvement Commissioner with the city of Garden Grove, a 24-year resident of Garden Grove and a product of our local schools. I can say that I'm heavily invested in our community. I am here this evening to talk about Item 7A on tonight's agenda. I was very happy to hear that the City Council approved a letter to Congress in support of President Obama's immigration solutions in regards to DACA and DAPA, but now there is a possibility that the previous council vote could be rescinded. My parents came to this country as undocumented immigrants, came to work hard, raise a family. They benefited by a law that was led by President Ronald Reagan, which lifted more than 2.7 million Americans out of the shadows and into the US workforce. For the first time, millions of undocumented immigrants could apply for a job, open a bank account, start building credit, and even own a home. You can see that elected officials from both sides, from the left and on the right, have supported efforts like DACA and DAPA. We are not talking about sanctuary cities or other things that have been thrown to you. We are talking about an issue that affects many families from our own diverse community. Let's skip the politics. I urge you to do what is right for our community. Garden Grove was recently referred to as the city of compassion. Let's stick true to that. I urge you, the council, to not rescind their vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen Blackman.
Hi there. I'm in the riffraff room tonight. I wanted to know how you got all these guys out tonight. Excuse me? I resent a lot of things that are going on tonight. One thing is that, why are we trying to divide our community? Why do we have to bring these issues up at City Council? I don't understand why we don't have a forum ahead of time. I think this country and this city has many, many avenues for immigrant help, legal and illegal. If that's the word you want to use, it was a word I grew up with. So undocumented or documented, however you want to say, we care about this community, we care about immigration, but I feel like we're being held hostage. I resent it. I resent having to come out with what I feel about this, that, and the other, and I don't think it's a topic, I don't think it's the way it should have been brought up. I think it could have been handled a lot differently. And I feel used, I feel abused, and I feel like people are really just pulling at each other over it, and there's no reason. We have a brand-new opportunity. Why aren't we taking it? Why are we trying to go down this road? Let's build Garden Grove. We don't have to have proclamations and resolutions every time we turn around. I want to grow Garden Grove. I don't want to divide it. I really want leaders to stand up and build this community, not tear it down, and that's what we're doing. Can we get some music on Main Street? I'd like to see if we could move towards, we don't have to have housing complexes, and we don't have to have zone changes, maybe, maybe not. We don't have to have parking garages. Could we just take away the $2,500 fee to have music on Main Street and see if we can bring some revenue in there, like by the end of the summer? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, okay, one more card.
Good evening. I have been a resident of Garden Grove since July 24th, 1961. I'm a past member of the Orange County Sanitation District, elected. I'm a past member of the Board of Trustees for the Coast Community College District, which I served for almost 17 years. I want to say something about the issues of the evening. It's not so much about the discrimination issue, but we are a nation of laws, and we've been a nation of laws for, since 1776. And I want to remind the audience that this country was built on a nation of laws. There are many of us in this room that have not served in the service. I am a Korean War veteran, where we lost over 50,000 people there. In Vietnam, we had over 50,000 people. That number is not even a historic number when you talk about the families of those victims that died, those people sacrificed to go to Vietnam and to Korea to make this country a better place to live. And I don't think many people, the audience, don't realize the sacrifice that many of us made. If they haven't seen what sacrifices are, I trust that they would sometimes go to the VA Hospital in Long Beach and just see the crippled people over there who went to Korea and who went to Vietnam and their families. And today is the historic day. Yes, I agree that maybe the immigration issues should, has to surface in some way, but it shouldn't be done by the City Council. We have a people represented in Congress and the Senate that should be addressing this matter, not us as a City Council. This city also has a history, especially Vietnam, helping the Vietnam people when they moved into Camp Pendleton. There were several churches, St. Olaf Lutheran, St. Anselm, that sacrificed many of their people to help the Vietnamese community settle. In addition to that, being a member of the Coast Board of Trustees, we established a learning program through the Police Academy to assist these people to understand the customs of the United States and to be able to be better citizens. Those issues of immigration at that time had nothing to do with what we're doing here tonight. I just wanted to ask the City Council to reexamine the purpose of this resolution, as you're thinking about. It's very important that those of us who sacrificed, got injured, lost their lives, not so much us, but their families that are survivors. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, David Nguyen, and then Johnny Hung Pham. Is there David Nguyen here? Please step forward. Okay, next person, Johnny Hung Pham. Is that person here? Please step forward.
My name is Johnny Hung Pham, and I just wanted to make a quick remark, but before that, it's my first time, so please apologize if I make a mistake or anything. I just want to say, earlier I heard in the room about some people, well, a few people talking about Mr. Fat, and I really think that he's a good guy. He dedicated a lot of his work for the community, and I just feel that he's very helpful. For someone coming here saying all that, I just hope they have more, you know, resource and reliable resources, you know, because we really support him. Thank you.
Do we have any responses from our members? Mr. Buie?
I thought I would wait until we discuss the 7A, but I thought since there are many of you here, I think that before, some of you whom might leave earlier would appreciate if I would give some of my views. You know, as I sit here and listen to many of you, some giving us a very sad story, my heart is, you know, is very heavy. Whether or not you agree with my vote later tonight, I want to make it very clear that this city, our city Garden Grove, the actions that we took does not, should not be translated to, you know, just simply black and white, whether we are a city of compassion or a city who supports immigrants. It's beyond a stereotype view that we want to, you know, place on each other. You know, a couple months ago, I didn't want to tell this story, but I felt that I need to. A couple months ago, there is a Hispanic boy, 17 years old, a homeless student in our school, felt very depressed and hung himself. Their parent, or who are also homeless, came to a Golden Heart Association, a charity group, that fed the homeless every week. They used to come there, so when their son died and the body was not released by the hospital for a funeral, they are desperate and they come to us for help because they couldn't get help from the other communities, from their own community. We, you know, a group of us raised the money, about $6,000, to help pay for the funeral. This person, his name is Santador Lozanle, and not only we tried to help him bury it, we put ourselves in the shoe of the parent, and we felt very sad. You know, if I have to be homeless and my son was so depressed because I cannot help him with his self-esteem, and he would have to took his own life, I would never forgive myself. And so because of that, I felt that, we felt that we have to do something to, you know, ease the parent pain. Those kind of things. I hope you see that, that it shows that we are the people of compassion. Sometime you may not agree with my decision, and I respect that, but please do not label us one way or the others. I remember, well, a few of you are, you know, Vietnamese refugee or, you know, son or daughter of a Vietnamese refugee. And you referenced that. Let me tell you one thing. Your hardship is very saddened, but let's think about other Vietnamese refugee. A week ago, I met a father who is about 71 years old. For the past 40 years, for the past 40 years, every time he went to a wedding, his heart is sinking because he remember of his daughter 35 years earlier, about 35 years earlier, when they tried to escape Vietnam in a small tiny boat, they ran into the pirates. You know, the pirate grabbed his daughter from his arm, and at that last day, he can still remember vividly, his daughter yelled out to him, "Dad, help me." For 35 years, it's haunting him because he know, he think his daughter is still alive, waiting for him to rescue her. Such tragedy. You cannot tell me that I cannot feel in my heart whenever, you know, the life of an undocumented family being torn apart. But I believe we cannot just simply act, you know, with... But I believe we cannot just simply act, you know, without emotion. We have many other things to do. So I just want to take this opportunity to address you, and that's all I can express at this moment. Thank you.
You know, thank you everybody for coming. This is a very sensitive issue. This is an issue that does affect our city, does affect our community. This is an issue where our city has already set precedent in terms of informing our federal representatives on how we are affected and impacted by federal policies. This city has already taken stands on human rights. This is an issue of human rights. This is an issue of the inconceivable sacrifice the immigrants make on the way to this land. The reality is, what about us? The reality is, we all have immigrant roots. That is the history of this country. The sacrifices made are inconceivable. It is true. The reality is, what does it take for somebody to leave everything behind? Everything familiar, sights, sounds, families, food, culture, religion, everything. Why would someone do that? I ask myself every day, why would my mother do that while she was eight months pregnant? Why would she risk her own life and the life of her unborn child? Why would she do so illegally? Because it was a crime to escape Vietnam. It was illegal to escape Vietnam. It was illegal to escape Vietnam. My family did not have any documents in Thailand at a UN refugee camp. That is the reality. For Vietnamese Americans, we should never forget what has pushed us out for better opportunity. We should never forget those that have fought before us to improve America before we even got here. We should never forget that. And it is inconceivable to even imagine as an American today to leave everything behind and go into the unknown and be surrounded by only horizons and to be hijacked by pirates just like the Guatemalans that have escaped Central America through Mexico, being hijacked by pirates on the buses to the border here. We had to pay coyotes to escape Vietnam. We slept at the marketplace on the way out, hiding from the police. It was illegal to escape Vietnam. We had documents and gold on us because that was the international currency. Luckily, thank God, my mother petitioned, my patron saint, when I was inside the womb, San Martin de Bordes, the patron of social justice and the patron of poverty. And that is why I'm here, and thank God I'm here, and I will never forget why we're here. I am urging my fellow council members to hear the voices of your own residents, but not only that, but to remember how we got here. This resolution is non-binding, but this resolution does send a clear message on how immigration policies and the lack of action on immigration reform in our United States Congress has impacted our community. DACA and DAPA clearly helps our community. In fact, organizations are already helping. Jaclyn Dan from Asian Americans Advancing Justice, who works here in this city as an immigration attorney, has helped 300 immigrants. She says that there's a 24-year weight on backlogs separating families. My two sisters were separated from us due to the commotion of leaving and escaping illegally from Vietnam. Does that make us illegal? No. It does not make us illegal. It is a human right to be alive. It is a God-given right to be alive. And for those that say, "We take up too much time, this council takes up too much time," this is your meeting. This is your meeting, this is the public's time. We signed up for this to listen to you, not to any one particular group, but to the public. And when the public speaks, our obligation is to express interest and to listen. That is clearly what we signed up for. This meeting does not belong to any one group or any one person. This is the public's meeting. So when you take your time up there, we shall listen. So I thank you everybody for sharing your perspectives. We may differ in views. The reality is, the data shows, if we help immigrants, it will help our economy. If we help the kids, I didn't come here by choice, I didn't know any better, I was inside my mom's womb. I came to this country when I was three months old. But I can tell you, I'll never forget the sacrifices made by my parents, and I'll never forget the sacrifices made by US veterans. I'll never forget the sacrifices made by South Vietnamese veterans. I'll never forget the sacrifices made by the people who laid their lives down in this country, for all the civil rights movements as well. We come here, we are where we are because of many causes and conditions that have led us to this point. We are not going to turn back. We are going to move forward. We're going to move forward, and we're going to acknowledge and give people the dignity and respect that they deserve. It is a God-given right. So I urge you to please do not rescind the action. We compromised. The issue that you had, Councilmember Buie, was that you didn't want those three actions that would allow me as mayor to be engaged in the community, to have brainstorm sessions, to...
Mr. Mayor, I need to stop you.
Excuse me, sir. No, no you don't.
We are not talking about that item. So please...
Sir, 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 excuse me, I am responding. So there are three sections here that you did not want in, and we took out, okay? So we already did that. And the issue was that we didn't want to say, "We want to tell other cities this." That's fine. I accepted that. I listened, and you voted for it. I don't know what the excuse is. Right now, we don't have Councilmember Beard here. We're here, we need to be present, we do our job. If you're under pressure by other groups, that is not leadership. That is not leadership. If you voted for something, then stand with it.
Okay, I would like to make some comments.
Sir, you already made your comments at this time?
You have referenced me, so I...
Okay, please, please limit your comment.
First of all, your remark earlier was incorrect and was wrong, that Vietnamese refugees is illegal refugee or illegal immigrants. That's totally wrong. Let me explain why. Yes, they escaped Vietnam illegally from the, from the point of view of the Vietnamese Communist government, but they are not viewed by the US government as illegal immigrant. In fact, they are legal immigrant, thanks to the policy of the United States of America. I am, I was on a tiny little boat escaping Vietnam with my family in the vast ocean. When we escaped, we have no idea where our destiny will be. Maybe we will make it across to Philippines, maybe we will get to Malaysia, Indonesia, or Thailand. But I was so surprised that we were picked up by a huge cargo ship. And thanks to the US government, we are automatically allowed the status of refugee and granted residency in the United States. When I get to the United States, or at that time when I saw the huge cargo ship, you know, picking us up, I was so surprised. It was a US cargo ship. I thought, I was 17 years old, and I thought to myself, wow, the United States abandoned the Vietnam, the Vietnamese people, the Vietnam war, but they did not abandon the people. They never have. They pick us up, they took us in, they embraced us, they given us opportunity to reside here, to live here. They help us in any way that they can to help us settle with our second life. And for that, I remember that very clearly, the time that I landed in Minnesota 40 years ago, in the middle of the night. When I opened my eyes in the morning, I was so surprised, I thought I was in heaven. The people was nice to me, they spent, I did not spoke, I did not speak English, and people was kind to show me how to live in, in the United States, how to go to the supermarket, take us around to shop with shoe clothes, because we came here with just one clothes in our, on our body. And at that time, I promised myself, one of these day when I make it in society, I will give back and will be just as generous as those that help me here in life. I talked to myself, the American people are the kindest people in the world.
Mr. Buie, did you want to address what I was saying? That's why you wanted some time.
That's why I was saying that your comment, your conclusion, that the Vietnamese refugees are illegal, that's totally wrong. We are legal resident here in the United States, the moment that we landed at the refugee camp.
Thank you, Mr. Buie, that point is...
Secondly, okay. Secondly, your expression of the resolution that Councilmember Beard and I vote yes was totally wrong. When you asked us that you will cross out that three section and change the wording that will urge Congress to pass the law to arrest immigration, you did not mention anything about DAPA. And my understanding is, that resolution will be reworded so that it will be urging Congress to pass immigration law to arrest the immigration issue, nothing about the president executive order. And with that understanding that I thought, maybe I give you the compromise and vote yes for it. Had that not be the case, I would have voted no on it, because there's no way I can support the president executive order. And that's why I understand Councilmember Beard and I want to rescind that vote because it is not what we voted for that night two weeks ago.
Thank you, thank you, you've made your point. At this, you know, let's be very clear. When I said that we escaped illegally, I mean very clearly, we escaped illegally. That doesn't make us illegal immigrants. It was, it was a crime punishable by death. People who were caught were taken away. Can't imagine what people have gone through to risk their lives. I'm not going to debate semantics here, but what we do know is that it was US policies that helped us. And at this point, we have US policies that can help us. We have US policies that can help our residents. We have US policies that can help our children. And we as a city know the impact that the lack of action on immigration reform in Congress has on our residents, on our economy, but also on unifying our community. We're not here to be divisive. We're here to acknowledge people who are already here. It was US policies brought forward by Republican President Ronald Reagan that have helped undocumented immigrants become Americans, that have helped their children. So when you talk about illegal or not illegal, the reality is, we're talking about policies that can change. If you see that possibility of change, if you see your own children brought here just for a better future and to contribute to this country as they already have, as they wake up every day as an American, then support this. But like I said, you voted on this. We're going to recess the city council to conduct our successor agency business. I'm handing it over to the successor agency chair, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Yes. Member Buie?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Phan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard? Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications in conjunction with city council. We just have consent items, approval of the minutes, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Still moved. Second?
Hold the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes with Councilmember Beard being absent.
Thank you. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council.
Thank you. Item five, consent items.
Yes, the following consent items, 5A through 5D, can be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member.
Anyone want to pull anything? Okay.
I'll move the entire balance.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes with Councilmember Beard being absent.
Okay, item six, please.
Item six is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code regarding rooftop solar energy systems. And Alana Cheng is here to give that report.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Last September, the governor assigned Assembly Bill 2188 for solar energy permits, which states that it is policy of the state to promote and encourage the use of solar energy systems and to limit obstacles to their use. Therefore, local jurisdictions must adopt an ordinance that creates an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop energy systems. The attached ordinance is intended to satisfy this requirement by developing a checklist of all requirements to be eligible for expedited review, allowing for electronic submittals and authorizing the building official to administratively approve their application. Therefore, staff recommends that city council introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems per AB 2188. This concludes staff report, and staff's available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions to staff? None? I'm going to move this item.
Second?
Please vote.
Motion carried with four yes votes with Councilmember Beard being absent.
Item 7A, please.
Item 7A is a request of Councilmember Buie and Councilmember Beard to rescind Resolution Number 9315-15 relating to federal immigration policy.
I know Mr. Beard isn't here, and he also requested to rescind this item, and unfortunately, he hasn't, he won't have the opportunity to, or he didn't have the opportunity, rather, to hear all the testimonies, the powerful testimonies that we heard today from the community and the people doing the work in the community and the people helping the community, assisting folks and helping them with their applications, et cetera. But... et cetera. But, uh, we're, we have this item on the agenda, and we can take action on it. It's being requested by Member Bowie. Would you like to speak on it?
Yes. Uh, when I receive the resolution prior to this meeting, it is not- When I received this resolution, uh, last week, and I read it, and, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the one that had been modified. It is not what I vote for when I cast my votes two weeks ago. At the very last minute, when you, um, agreed to compromise and change and remove the three section, just a little bit before that, you mentioned that you will change the resolution, uh, language to say that it will be urging Congress to pass federal legislative reform to fix broken immigration system. That's it. So when I heard that, I thought, okay, uh, we will not, uh, signing this resolution that, that's supporting President Obama's executive order, because I am not believe in an executive order that, uh, would, uh, you know, bypass, uh, you know, the nation law. We have Congress to pass law, and I do not support the, uh, you know, the, the executive order in general. And so that's why I felt that, okay, if that is the case, I might be, uh, agree to the compromise, and that's why I vote yes. We had only five, six seconds to vote after you make that change. So my vote, yes, that day, based on my understanding that, that, that we are sending a resolution to Congress to urge them to pass immigration reform. And that is appropriate, because that's a job that Congress need to do. Uh, and I never in my mind that I thought that we are sending a, a resolution to support the, uh, the President Executive Order. Um-
Congress is not doing anything.
Sir?
Now, I believe that, uh, this is a job for Congress, not for the city. And Congress have local office. So we should bring this issue up to Congress and the local, uh, Congress, Congressional Office to conduct town hall meetings. This is where the congressional town hall meeting should be addressed, and, and the resident and all people from different walk of life should, should gather to voice a concern, not at the City Hall. We are charter to, uh, to, to, to address the other issue that are directly affecting our life here, not, not those issue that are going to be addressed by Congress. And so that's why, uh, you know, Councilman Beard and I would like to rescind the resolution, because it is not what we vote for two weeks ago. And I believe, I heard through the City Manager that Councilman Beard is having some explanation of, of why he want to rescind that, because I don't want to speak on, on, on his behalf.
You know, Ms. Mr. Bowie, I, I, I respect, uh, your decision, and I want to work with you. I want to work with our entire council here, and we can pass something. We can pass something that acknowledges the stories, acknowledges that we need the kids to have a pathway. They shouldn't be living in fear. That's affecting everything, our public safety, our economy, et cetera. Most importantly, it's affecting how we interact with one another when we know that we can have a pathway, but others cannot. I don't think that's okay. And I have to point out that this very council has already informed Congress on federal policies. We voted together on Congressman Christopher Smith's bill, the Vietnam Human Rights Bill, urging Congress and our congressional delegation here in Orange County. I brought that forward. It passed unanimously. We've also, is that true, Mr. City Attorney? Have we done that?
Sorry, I wasn't here.
Mr. Roder, you, you were here for that?
Mayor, I believe that's the case, but I honest, I honestly couldn't tell, but I believe that is accurate.
That is very accurate. I signed those letters to members of Congress on behalf of this council who voted unanimously, supporting Republican Member of Congress Christopher Smith on the Vietnam Human Rights Bill. And this is a human rights issue. It is a human rights issue, not in Vietnam, but it's still important. In fact, I find it so important, because it is a human rights issue right here at home, in Garden Grove. So, don't tell me that we should not be informing federal policies. Congress represents us. We should let them know. And as a city, we should let them know how we're being impacted, just as you have, as this entire council has informed Congress on issues of human rights pertaining to other countries, on foreign policy at that. For a city council to talk about foreign policy, but a city council, you're saying, should not talk about domestic policies on how it's impacting us here in Garden Grove, in our own home? I will not accept that. That is unreasonable. But I want to work with you. I'm willing to work with you, genuinely work with you, so that we can pass something. So I know there's been some miscommunication here, possibly from the drafting of this, or at the speed of which we went about the amendments. So, Chris Van?
So procedurally, is it for us to now vote to rescind what was, uh, going to be sent? Is that how it's going to work, City Manager?
Yeah, the item on the agenda is for rescission, and it's due to the City Council's rules of procedure. To reconsider, it has to be done at the same meeting when you took the action, because that meeting has already been recessed. The only option you have is to rescind. Um, so if you want to consider alternative language, then you would have a separate action to bring it back on the agenda with whatever direction you want to provide staff for a new resolution.
Okay. So if, it sounds like Councilman Bowie and Councilman Beard was misunderstanding how the resolution would be in, in its final form. And I certainly would not want any council member to sign a, a resolution that he or she does not agree to in totality. So therefore, Councilman Bowie, if you make the motion to rescind it, I will certainly second it, because I think if we wish to have you and the mayor work a compromise to make the resolution the right way, where all parties understand it, perhaps we can bring it back at a future time.
I would like to make a motion.
And I'll second that. And what exactly is your motion?
Uh, my motion is to, uh, rescind the Resolution eighteen A that we passed, uh, last week.
And I would second that.
Please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes with Councilmember Beard being absent.
I voted yes to rescind this with you. I want to respect your decision to rescind it. I don't necessarily agree with the reasoning, but I hope that with my accord with your motion, Mr. Bowie, that we'll work together to pass the resolution acknowledging, we don't have to recognize the President, but the reality is, these programs help our kids, our kids here in Garden Grove. The kids that you talked about, you have a compassionate heart. You have a heart of charity. But what's beyond charity are the policies that impact many, many more people. It is okay. It is great. We feel great about feeding someone a meal for one day, perhaps during the holidays. But if we're able to change policies that would shelter people, and it would make sure no one would go hungry, I think that's our job as policymakers. My job as a policymaker is not to offer a meal to somebody, but to find out, why aren't they getting a meal? And how do I help with that? So I hope that we'll work together. Can I have your commitment on working with me, Mr. Bowie?
I have to see what you, you presenting, but I always, uh, work with you, Mayor Baugh.
Thank you. We're at the end of our meeting, and we have some closed session items. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, an item, uh, eight eight was, um, was already discussed at a special meeting earlier today, so we will not be meeting on eight eight. That, that meeting has already occurred, and the rest of the items don't need additional explanations, so we may go into closed session for those items as listed on the agenda.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of matters that I would like to put on the agenda for-
Well, we back! 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 Well, we back!
We're going to take a two-minute recess.
A couple of things. Uh, the first one is I felt that we probably, I, I would like to put on the agenda for next meeting to discuss about the procedure for bringing up, uh, a resolution. I believe that we have so many resolutions left and right being introduced with our prior, uh, uh, input from the, from the council. And I think it would be prudent to, before we introduce any resolution, use staff time to, uh, to, to work on it, that perhaps we need to bring that at the council meeting before and get, you know, want, uh, want the council member to support that before we direct the staff to, you know, spend times and energy working on the resolution. Doing so also benefit the public, that they would get plenty of times, at least two weeks, to think about, you know, the item that we, that the resolution would, would address. Also, you know, it, it, um, you know, warrant that before the, the staff work on the res- resolution, you know, at least we have one council member would support that. So I would like to, you know, to put that on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss about the protocol to, uh, you know, submit resolution for council consideration. Obviously, if there are certain time when we have an emergency, then perhaps there will be a remedy to accommodate that. So I, I would like to add that into the agenda, and I do not want to, you know, I would like to give the council a lot of time, so that's why I want to add this into the-
Thank you.
Into, uh, into City Ma- as a City matter. The second issue that I would like to bring forward is the, um, issue that we discussed in closed session, um, between the, you know, the mayor, um, running into with one of the police officer on duty. Now, I do not know, you know, the details of the discussion that evening, but what I have been brief on give me a, a huge concern, that the mayor called a on-office, uh, on-duty officer at one thirty in the morning to discuss an issue. I do not understand the, the, I, I know that would be generally what the, the conversation is about, but even though I do not know the, have not heard the tapes, uh, and do not know in detail what the conversation is about, it is a grave concern to me that the city with, uh, you know, lack of officer on duty, that the, the mayor would call him over. Now, I, you know, I have to be concerned, because what happened if we, if there are some, uh, you know, other crime in the city, and because one officer is, is being pulled away? We don't have enough police to patrol the city and keep our city safe. Secondly, I want to, uh, make sure that we, the City Council, uh, member, have to uphold a very high ethics, a very high, uh, uh, conduct, that we do not abuse our privilege and summon the police to, to a place to discuss, uh, issue that are not our emergency. Secondly, um, it is sadant for me to find out that it took, um, more than a month, or maybe close to a month, for someone to request that information. I thought we are a city of, uh, of transparent, and so I would like to, uh, put on the agenda for next council meeting to talk about the procedural of, for transparency. What do we consider as public records, and what do we not consider as trans- as public record, so that, you know, information can flow quickly and timely. That's a two, I, I, I turn that would like to, to put on the agenda for next week.
For me, I'd like to ask, a few weeks back, we had the boy scout who came in and talk about the parking permit, and we received a letter from his mother recently about that. So it's just perhaps a briefing by staff about the feasibility of having permit parking where the parking issues are in extremis, meaning that not all over the city, but where we have to implement it, because it sounds like around this area, around the mobile home area here, and in particular, and I'll talk offline where it's at, um, that there's a need for some sort of monitoring, because apparently the people who live on these streets can't park based on the overflow of the nearby mobile home parks. So I'd like to get more of a report on that issue.
Thank you. Um, regarding Councilmember Bowie's first point, um, I would agree with that, but I would like to augment kind of your request, so it's not specifically just about resolutions specifically, but rather that we schedule having a public discussion about how items are agendized in general, what discretion ought council members to have in terms of being able to allocate, um, staff time and city resources to pursuing various issues, um, what litmus test is in place to determine whether proposed agenda items are relevant to the businesses of the city, um, and, and also what happened to our previous procedure we had in place where if a council member wanted to bring up an item and put it on the agenda, that it would be voted on at one meeting and determined, I mean, that was kind of the litmus test, I think, before, and I think we lost sight of that, but I don't know if that's in our code, or if that was a sort of a gentlemanly thing that we had before, but that's how it was always done in the past, as I recall, and would like to focus on that. We've had a lot of late meetings, um, late- We've had a lot of late meetings lately. We've got tremendous amount of highly educated staff members sitting in the other room that we're keeping here till midnight. And what I've noticed in recent meetings is we're talking about a lot of things that don't directly pertain to, keeping the streets paved, keeping the parks well groomed, keeping the lights on. I may have a narrow view of what the role of the city is supposed to do, but for me, I'd like to kind of draw our attention, try and refocus on conducting the business of the city and sort of staying, leaving politics aside, staying out of regional and federal issues.
So by regional issues, do you also mean SCAG and county? Do you want to specify? Because we are already a part of, you know, some regional bodies, and also we directly relate to the federal government with very specific funding. For example, our housing funds are federal dollars, and also our community development block grant funds are also federal dollars. So do you want to explain the scope of that?
Yeah. So I would, I would like to agendize a discussion about all that. Let's, let's have a discussion about what's relevant and what's not. I think that would be a good discussion to agendize and to solicit public input on.
Okay. At this point, we're going to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Okay. Our next meeting, okay, this is very important. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, August 25th, and it will not be here. It will be at the Courtyard Center, and the address is 12732 Main Street. Again, the next meeting is Tuesday, August 25th. It will be posted online and also at City Hall. The meeting is not going to be here at the Community Meeting Center. It will be at the Courtyard Center at 12732 Main Street. And we are going to recess into closed session for the items listed.